Mitigation Grant Award for Father Ryan Waterwell. The same for Circle Park Waterwell and to rescind 783-20 requesting the assistance of Harrison County with Debees Road and we're adding 5-0 resolution requesting the assistance of Harrison County and the city of Guffport and repair of Debees Road.
Do you have a motion? Go ahead.
I'm moving on. I'd like to ask the question, why are we removing the fireworks?
Dr. Tisdale, on some of the things that I still had a question on, we would probably look at it about three weeks from now, I think. That was my intention.
So what are you planning on doing with it?
Bringing it back up after we get some details on some of the location as well as enforcement issues that are still in question in my mind. So I think we want to get those questions answered and then move forward with it.
Well, the location is supposed to be on the conditional use on the RBs. What can you change that?
About the fireworks?
Right.
Yeah.
So you're going to change that area?
No, I just want to answer some, get some questions answered about the nuts and bolts of this ordinance, specifically insurance, specifically timing of what will be enforced and how it's going to be enforced and the locations of portable buildings or tents or whatever.
Another question that had come up, just for whenever this does something that might be covered, is multiple times today, people have asked me about the enforcement of burn bans if, you know, this, on those two days, if it'll be allowed in the city during the burn, if we have burn bans as well, so.
Right.
All right. Do you have a motion?
I'm moving.
All right. Second, anyone? First by George, second by Felix Guns. All in favor? All right, 5-0. We'll now move to the presentation agenda, the mayor's report.
In, you know, in honor of his mother and a member of our police department family. So Mike, we're sorry for your loss and, you know, we'll all be together one of these days, but it's a tough deal right now. But it is a great pleasure for me to say, read this proclamation. Whereas January 17th, 2021, Almighty God called Susan Schenk home to dwell with Him in His glories of paradise after a courageous battle with cancer. And whereas Susan Ann Schenk was born in Biloxi on November 25th, 1950, and was the mother of Michael Wilson and Angela Honer. Whereas Susan faithfully served the city of Biloxi in the Police Department Communications Division from March 26, 1987 until retiring in November 26 in 2013. In her 26 years of dedicated service, she achieved the position of floor supervisor and received many written commendations from citizens for her professional service. Susan's unwavering dedication and diligence during her tenure with the city of Biloxi provided a vital service to our citizens. Now therefore, I, Andrew Fofo-Gillich, Mayor of the city of Biloxi, do commemorate and commend the lifelong devotion and accomplishment of Susan Ann Schenk and do hereby proclaim the 17th day of January 2021 as Susan Ann Schenk Day.
Thank you.
Wait a minute, Mike Leonard, he's going to follow up with some of the events that we have taken place that should be noted in our mayor's report.
May I borrow? Just a couple of updates. Our debris removal contract has completed work now. Removal of any remaining storm debris will be done either by our Public Works trucks or by the routine pickup by Pelican Waste. Some other updates, work has started this week on the Bayview boardwalk or walkway from Forest Avenue to Kensington in Ward 1. Work also began on the infrastructure segment SM 1 and SM 2 in Ward 1 this week. Work on the parallel roadway in Ward 2 is scheduled to be completed in March and two rail crossings will be closed, Nixon and Dory Streets. Work was completed on the Elzy Place Extension in Ward 6, the Tanglewood Waterline in Ward 3, Bella V Parkway in Ward 7, and the first phase of the Eagle Point Park in Ward 7. We just wanted to do that just because we see these little snippets about projects, but I think if you write it all down, you realize just how much work is getting done right now. We talked a few years ago, the word of the day was happening now, and we finally arrived at a point where your effort supporting our infrastructure projects is showing fruit now. We're really finishing a lot of work and it's timely. As we finish these, we'll remind you about that they're done, so just wanted to let you know. That's a lot of work getting done and it started two years ago.
Okay, and I think that concludes our report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Leonard.
Question.
Okay.
On Bayview, what is the timeframe for that to be finished?
Nine months.
Yeah, nine months was the original period of performance in the contract.
So you started now, so you have nine months to be completed from, did you start this week or what?
Yeah, they're marking some things. They really didn't turn any dirt at this point. I think they're actually marking boundaries and stuff like that at this point in time.
But the clock is running. Their nine-month clock is running, so they're on the job. And, you know, they'll be putting out the silt fence, they'll be removing all the old rocks and so forth before they start putting the new concrete down.
Yeah, that's going to look well when you finish that with the walkway there. Now, you're trying to preserve the grass, rare grass, they ever run there, but it's fine. I can be able to get down to there, there's always a sand piece down there.
There'll be.
And you used to play on you as a kid.
Yep.
And you gotta do that from the.
Good bottom, there's still a good sandy bottom there, you know.
Again?
There's a good sandy bottom there, you know, right now.
Yeah.
Not all mud.
So it's going to run from Forest to Kensington or to that corner house on Kensington?
Yep. Sheet pile and then step down to access to the water and then, you know, a little separation from the roadway to the walkway, so that'll be.
Yeah, that was a bad idea when it covered the rocks in there because you could never keep it clean.
Yeah. I think we're going to use some of those rocks down on the point. You know, we had a project that would, that little place where it's good soft shelling right there at the end of the seawall by the Seafood Industry Museum, coming back and there's some debris. I think the idea was to use some of those rocks, granite or whatever, whatever they are, limestone, big rocks, to relocate some of them down there to cover up some of the debris.
Okay.
So that's, I think that's an $800,000 project that we asked for in Thailand.
Could be.
To Go Mesa Ask.
Yeah.
And that's the price tag. Of course, that's in the legislature today, so we're not sure where, what's going to pop out.
Well, how do we find with the drains? Do we have drains on the road running beneath that way?
There's one drain in the middle of that section, right across from the bolt. And I think that still would be, you know, taken into factor, so they'll be over the top of that drain, as I recall. There's one outfall from Bayview to that water, but that's, it kind of naturally goes in. I haven't looked at the plans yet, but that's, there's still one outfall there.
Well, how's it affect the piers out there already? Is that a?
No, it shouldn't affect them, no. Should be able, you know, to step across that.
You'll be, you'll walk with, there'll be a trap.
Two or three piers right now, I believe, that will be impacted, but it should not. We foresee no problems connecting the road to the pier across the walkway. Yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right. I don't believe we have any departmental reports, so we'll move to council reports. We'll start with Mr. Tisdale.
Thank you, Mr. President. As has been mentioned several times over the past couple of years and last month, I believe, if not a few weeks ago by Ms. Newman, litter continues to be an issue in some parts of the city. And Mr. Leonard, you had noted that it might be worth making a budget note next year to get a big truck for Public Works to haul some of this debris and stuff. What I would suggest also is that we look at litter teams, whether they're two or three man teams. This was done years ago and over the years, not recently, but over the years, we've, we no longer have litter teams. They'd be out trimming, weed eating, just two or three man teams. They need a vehicle to get from one place to another, some supplies and equipment to do what they do. But with all the litter that we have in different places, particularly around fast food businesses, just because people throw things out the window. But just a note, perhaps for next year's budget, also the lights at the north end of the Pops Ferry Bridge are, I know we were looking at that and there were about a dozen or 14 lights out. Have those been, I think they were LEDs, I can't recall what the issue was, but as mentioned, maybe five or six weeks ago, are we moving forward on that?
I, I'll check, Councilman. I know they were working on, they had an electrician working on the bridge on the lights, but I'm not sure if they finished yet. I'll send you a note.
Thank you, sir. That concludes my report. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Tisdale. Ms. Newman?
I agree with Tisdale. We can call it the beautification crew, but I think it'll pay off in the end. I don't know with COVID, everyone's hurting anyway, but it'll pay, pay for itself in the end because, you know, people want to live where it's beautiful, people want to invest where it's beautiful. And right now, it's even mostly in those areas I discussed last time, it's still horrible, horrible. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Newman. Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, I have a couple of issues we need to address today and they put on the table. And one was about the political signs. You know, we have an ordinance in the city that says these signs are not supposed to be put out in 60 days before election. And what we set is an election cycle. And the signs, you sign up, whether you first sign up or last to sign up, you sign, they'll put up after the last person signs up. Whether you're the first or the last, doesn't matter. And that was the reason for the rule being put in place. It makes it a fair election for everybody. And everybody keeps saying it's unconstitutional. I don't say it's unconstitutional. When we set it by a city, it's just a fair election cycle, everything's been in place, and the right can give anybody permission to put signs out against the city ordinance. So whatever we have to do that makes us right, it should be done. You have a couple of candidates right now putting signs out, all right? The rest of the councilmen are not doing it because the cycle says you put them out February 60 days before the election. So you don't have this election room in order right, in order fair, and it's got to be fair for everybody. And I've addressed this with y'all before, you know, I'm waiting here now, I'm trying to get a phone call, say, how can they can do it? You won't do it because it's not right to do it. According to our city ordinance, we should not put a sign out until, I think it's February 5th to 6th, 60 days before the election. So either, you know, current enforcement needs to do what they're supposed to do, go pick them up. We have sign owners in the city, somebody does something wrong with the sign, we shut them down, take it down, whatever you do, file them, cite them, doesn't matter to me. What you're going to do is follow the rules of the city. If it's unconstitutional, then it should have been addressed a long time ago because they've been using the same thing right for the last 30, 40 years in these elections. It's just something that's been done that way. And all of a sudden it's unconstitutional, I don't know where that come from. So, you know, you're advertising a political sign, it says, as a candidate, you cannot put them up until 60 days before the first primary.
Let me call Peter up here with us because some of the interactions we're getting with the MML and what they had notified to the cities in MML regarding, I guess, ordinances. Peter, if you could jump in and provide a little information regarding what was said, not that it was unconstitutional, but I mean, what was questioned from the state or the information that's coming down from MML regarding that ordinance.
When it first came up, we contacted the candidate, tried to get a commitment that he would remove the signs and not put any more signs up. At that point, you know, the timeline to, the timeline was getting closer and closer.
I mean, I think we're a week and a half away. And then about the same time, MML, we got a flyer from them reminding us, this was a Supreme Court case in the last two or three years where a city had a 60-day ordinance and they felt that was against somebody's right to free speech. This, you know, if a person in, that owns a house wants to express support for a candidate, that was ultimately challenged and that statute was found to be unconstitutional. Not necessarily saying that ours is unconstitutional, it's very close to that one, but MML was trying to warn everyone, look at your ordinances and be cautious about going into people's yards basically and pulling their signs up and things like that. And I mean, just, I think between COVID and between the hurricane and the cleanup, I think the decision was made by the administration is, there's more important things we have to deal with right now. And I don't know, you may want to do an executive order just saying, anybody can put signs out?
Well, you know.
Now, I mean, it doesn't matter to me.
I'm appreciative of that. You know, we had a number of days to go before it becomes a moot issue, I guess, but, you know, we would ask that there is an issue, some law on the books as far as how we proceed. But, you know, I guess over the next couple of days, we'll come to an understanding what needs to be done immediately to, you know, to move forward with this normal election cycle. And we will contact, you know, people as we've been contacted, you know, being asked why are these signs out now against the ordinance, against the rules of the ordinance. But we'll do our best in the next couple of days.
See, the problem I have and all that don't mean anything to me because when you signed up, they tell you you couldn't put a sign out for 60 days.
Yep.
Anybody that signed up was given the same sheet, told the same thing. And now you said, three weeks into it, doing it wrong, oh, it's unconstitutional. Well, it's unconstitutional three weeks ago, anybody that signed up should have been told, yes, you can put signs out.
Yeah.
That's all the candidates that's running. And that's what this ordinance says, no sign until 60 days before the first election. And that's what everybody was abiding by. So now we're looking at something that they're all changing.
No.
And it's not right.
Change, we're responding to.
The city ordinance still says, passed by the council, that this is the law in the city. So, and I don't see a way it's unconstitutional. You're not stopping anybody from free speech. You just put a sign out when you're supposed to. You're not stopping anything. You're setting up an election cycle. These things are controlled. They all run in certain towns. When you run, when you sign up and everything else. So now, there's nothing against free speech. And anybody can run. That's great. Competition's good. That's not a problem. The problem is, everybody was told you have 60 days before the first election and you can put out signs. And it was highlighted, they'd emailed everybody. Everybody got the same email. Now you're saying all this doesn't mean anything. Well, that's not right. It's the law in the city of Biloxi, and it should be enforced, you know? You're not supposed to have signs out, period.
Okay. There's some certifications by the parties they're running through. So I mean, there's some additional things that we need to research, and I'll do that in the next few days and we'll come to, you know, to a conclusion with this in the next few days. But there's some additional things with the executive committees who are running these elections that have to have some strength in what they do too. I don't know what their position would be with regard to the ordinance in the city, but it's their elections at this point, the primary, is run by these different parties. So there's a part of, some research that we need to do on their part too. So, but we'll do that in the next couple of days.
Essentially, it shouldn't have been addressed, all right? Talked to y'all about this a couple of different times, and they wouldn't do it in front of you, you know. But you do anything, they go to TV, you did it at the council meeting. That's what we do as council people. You bring anything up, do the council meeting at the right time, at your council report, and anything that's not right, it's not fair for any politician or candidate running that hasn't put any signs out. When they told you when you signed up, do not put any signs out for 60 days before the first election.
And we.
Then by by the law, then by by the law, that's the law.
We did look at, when it first came up, should we change that time to when someone first qualifies? Make that the time when you can put signs up. Then as we got more into it and started trying to peel back the onion a little bit, it's like, well, are we even allowed to have any time limit on signs? What if somebody wants to put a sign up six months before an election in their yard? I mean, you get into the, and it's called content neutral, it's a lot of legal Supreme Court type analysis of the type of speech, but, you know, given the short timeframe we're under, it's, you know, using our resources to go file an injunction or do some big stoppage, it just didn't seem like the prudent thing to do.
It's important to all the people that's running. It's important to people you're going to put, sitting in these cameras up here talking, going on these things. You know, we vote to laws in and now we're breaking all laws. That don't look too good on you, you know? And you're not stopping anybody from free speech. Everybody's set up to do the thing at the same time is all it was. And once you qualify, whether you qualify the first day or the last day, then you have the right to put your signs up. After you qualify, on the last day, when they shut down the qualification period, and then everybody has the same opportunity to put out their sign or whatever you want to do. That don't mean you can't talk to people before you ever put a sign out, and people do that. But according to the city ordinance, and everybody was told at that time, you have 60 days without political sign. So, I mean, it's not right for us to vote something in and then break the laws we vote in. And that's one way, and a lot of the candidates running there up here, they're going to put signs out. And now you say, okay, we're going to do the Supreme Court from.
We didn't say, okay, we will respond. I mean, I don't know what more we can say at this point, right now. We will respond and get a position in the next two days and then move forward from there.
You know, this, something needs to be addressed, it should have been addressed early, you know? It's right for anybody that wants to run, and that's great. You got 30 people running, fine, just all by by the same rules. That's the name of the game. In the rural states, you're not supposed to put out political signs 60 days before the election. And the rule hasn't changed. And if it's unconstitutional, I guess it was unconstitutional four years ago. Don't really know. You know, because we've been doing this for the last several times, and they've all been elected a couple of times. So I mean, it's just not right. It don't look good on the city of Biloxi when you break your own laws.
Again, we've responded to some things, some information that was released in a short term, a few, you know, days ago with regard to MML, and that kind of read, you know, shed a little bit of different position. But, you know, what I can say right now is in the next couple of days, we will respond according to ordinance or we have some recommendations on what should be done, given the ground conditions right now.
You need to know that, and that need to be put out on TV, whatever, what is defined, what's the rules, what's the regulation? You can't outvote that right now. I mean, that's what's in there. You know, so I'm just saying, so there's going to be some consequence if you did this wrong, whether you, you know? And that's, that's my point. And you make it right and fair for everybody, then that's what it's supposed to be, right and fair for everybody.
You have anything else, Mr. Lawrence?
That's it.
All right, Mr. Glavine?
I got a couple of things, but before I go to that, I just want to follow up on Councilman Lawrence's statement. You know, I tend to agree with you, Mr. Lawrence. It is a, it is our, our rule, our law of the ordinance, and if there was a resolution kind of saying, coming from this council that we support that ordinance, I would certainly support that if that's necessary. That's all I want to say about that right now. But moving forward in my ward, I just want to point out a few things. Reunion place, there was a damaged lift station, the fence around the lift station was damaged. I think I reported it in a previous meeting. It's still laying on the ground. Those residents are really concerned about it. I don't know who has jurisdiction to put the fence back up. It seems like when I did a little research, there's some federal guidelines that require those lift stations to be protected or a fence around them. So if we can find a way to kind of put that in a hopper and expedite it, I would appreciate the attention to that. I also sent forward a tree committee nominee. I don't know when that's going to come before the council, but I would request that maybe, unless we need to look for additional nominees, if we can get that on the agenda.
That was Mrs. Kennedy?
That was Mrs. Davis.
Somebody on Kennedy Lane.
Yeah, she lived on Kennedy Lane, that's Christine Davis, I believe, is, she had some interest. But if, if we need some additional nominees, just, you know, just let me know. And then I just have a question. Some of the neighborhoods are doing a good job cleaning up, but there's a lot of little small, you know, for lack of a better word, leaves and little bitty branches or debris. Do we have any capability to get a street sweeper in these areas or is that just reserved for mostly public parking lots or that sort of thing?
We have a street sweeper if you're interested anytime that way. It's scheduled every week, it's somewhere in the city every week. I'm not sure that that's the answer for these little debris piles. Honestly, I think the answer is that the residents ought to take care of them themselves.
Yeah. It, so what's happened over time, it's kind of got over into the street, I guess, and I guess they'd have to get out there and blow and sweep and, but it's throughout their entire, in one particular neighborhood. And I didn't know if that was an option, if we could put forward a request.
We do have a vacuum trailer that we use for things like after parades to pick up stuff.
Okay. I'll get with you afterwards, maybe.
I'll see if that could be used.
And if we can't do it, I just need to tell them they're going to have to get a neighborhood committee and try to, try to do some additional.
At the utility authority, you know, kind of looking at, and the discussion with Pelican Waste and what they've been, you know, if it's put in a bag.
Yeah.
Pelican Waste will pick it up.
Yeah.
If it's a normal, you know, weekly run, Thursdays and Fridays are in the town, they'll pick it up.
Yeah.
The construction debris that's done, not en masse, you know, not have a big project in sort of, but, you know, Pelican Waste should attack that on a weekly basis. But if it's just loose leaves, that's an issue with everyone, with us and them. So, you know, if it's loose leaves, put it in a bag and it'll be picked up. And, you know, again, if there's still a problem, our, you know, utility group will get to it as fast as we can.
All right. Thank you. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glavine. Mr. Guines?
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. We're pretty much wrapping up most of the work over in East Biloxi, particular Ward 2. And I just wanted to check with Walt to try to get me a report or maybe just catch you after the meeting about some of the claims that are still out there. We just, I had a few people asking me about the claims, so just kind of, we need to tap together so we can try to title those sins on up. The fencing is going real well, can't be beat. They're doing a very good job out there catching all the people, so that's great. And I want to give the rest of my time, I want to bring, ask Ms. Phillips Bullock to come on up and just, could just set the clock at about three minutes? And she just want to talk a little bit about community policing and some of the things in the community that maybe our police officers could kind of help assist us in.
Yes, sir. I'd like to first say good afternoon to the mayor, to my councilmen, councilmen guys. Thank you. I'm here on this afternoon, Mr. Mayor, to make a clarion call, a call to action, to sound the trumpet of the violence that's ravishing our community that's steadily escalating. Not too long ago, or months ago, we had a shooting right on Nixon Street. And just the other night, we had another shooting. And one of the bullets came through our window, and it could have very well been me. It could have very well been my son. And I'm here to, I know it might sound impossible, I want you to know that we have a good city councilman. I thank God for councilmen guys. I thank God this time we have cameras. So we did get the incident on cameras. This time, councilman, thank you for giving me and my son the money to help us to get the cameras. And I want to thank you so much for always answering our call. But Mayor, it's going to take you, it's going to take the citizens of East Biloxi. There's so much I can say, but I don't have enough time to say it. I am a minister, we do do outreach ministries in the community. I am out there in the community on a constant basis, so I'm inside the problem. And so, councilman guys, Mr. Mayor, I'm asking, I know it might sound impossible, but I'm asking for a town meeting, sir. I do have some recommendations, and my recommendations are, maybe we can use John in Rebecca Park, maybe we can use the area at the clock center, but it's so many. And my recommendations are, maybe we can use John in Rebecca Park. Maybe we can use the area at the clock center. But if so many citizens award to, they want to speak out. They might not never make it to a city council meeting. So, I'm a voice for them. I'm just frightened that it might be my mother next. It could be your mother, councilman or guys. You understand? This is our vicious, they're shooting into our dwellings. You see? And so, I'm here asking for a town hall meeting, Mr. Mayor. Councilmen guys, again, thank you for all that you do. And reward to, keep up the good work.
If you don't mind, would you please sign in at the?
Yeah, she signed in earlier.
Oh, she did? Okay, all right, thank you.
And that's just true to our community policing. Just a little bit more community policing is basically what we're asking. And we were fortunate to be able to put those cameras up so that we have a lead on, you know, the person who is generally the same person over and over doing it. And we'll be in touch. I've been working with Pastor Luther Fairley on that issue. So, thank you again. That concludes my statement.
Let me just respond to, you know, in the challenges we're seeing. You know, communications is always the key. And we're here to respond. This is not a question and answer, but we will eyeball, eyeball face to face. Talking through the problems is going to be the first step in solving the problem. So, you know, we want to keep it safe, friendly and beautiful for, you know, for everybody that calls us South Biloxi. And that's what we're going to do.
Yes, absolutely. So, thank you again, Ms. Bullock. That concludes.
Thank you. All right. I don't really have much. The first thing is on the debris. It ended up being a really good job. I know all of us were frustrated at one time because we were getting so many calls and everything. But for the most part, all of the debris in my ward and as I drive the city, most of it is picked up. So, they did a really good job and hopefully we can get what's left quick. The only other thing that I'd like to mention is I'd like to, George and Kenny both hit on it, the sign ordinance. And I know that for this election cycle, we're probably too late in the game. This is something that I've talked to Peter as well as Jerry about a couple of times. We have several issues. Number one is if we have a sign ordinance, that sign ordinance doesn't just apply to city elections. That sign ordinance has to apply to every election. And, you know, just last year, we had our statewide elections and we had statewide officials putting up signs in January that are four foot by eight foot all over our city. And no one said anything about those signs. So, if we're going to have a sign ordinance and we're going to enforce it, it has to be enforced not just on our elections, but our elections. Number two, and this is something that I brought up several years ago to Kenny and Jerry, is that through multiple Supreme Court cases, a sign, what it, the message that's on a sign cannot be regu-, or a sign cannot be regulated based upon the message that's on that sign. So, if you say that you can't have a political sign that's over a certain square foot, that has to apply to all signs in the city. It can't just apply to one type of sign. It has to apply to real estate signs. If you say it can only be out for a certain amount of time, it has to apply to all signs, not just political signs. And so, our ordinance does have some issues. Now, I don't know if there's ways around that or not, but there are multiple Supreme Court cases that basically shred our ordinance completely, to where it's not even relevant. And so, either we need to revisit and find a way that we can write it to where it's enforceable. And it's an ordinance that we use for all, you know, enforce for all elections, not just our city elections. Or either we, you know, write it to where it fits within those Supreme Court rulings, which I'm sure that MML would have a good, you know, grasp on what type of language that would have to be. And that's all I have.
Can I follow up on that?
Yes, sir.
What you're saying is somewhat true. But we do have a sign on in the City of Biloxi, for all signs. And we've been fighting over billboards and everything else. And we've been through a bunch of meetings, all of us, that they tried to put in light of billboards and different signs. And we stopped them. And they were trying to put out one message, and we stopped them. And the ordinance says, it don't say city election, it says elections.
Yeah, that's what my.
City ordinance. It's not for city election, but it's written in the City of Biloxi for political signs in the City of Biloxi.
And my point was that we had statewide elections last year, and no one said anything about those hundred foot by eight foot signs that were out for six months.
It don't say it's political signs. And I suppose we put up sixty days before the election.
Okay.
If you say anything about city election, general elections, anything. It's a city ordinance in the City of Biloxi, and we passed that as a council.
All right. All right. We will now move on to our public agenda. We'll have citizen comments. Each person will be allotted three minutes, a total time of forty-five minutes. We'll start on my left side, your right side. Is there anyone on my left side of the room, your right side, that would like to come and speak? If you will, please come forward, state your name and sign in.
I'm Danny Boudreau, 1731 South Carbridge Road. I am the engineer for Allure RV Park, which is on the agenda today. I'm just here for any questions you may have.
All right, thank you. And if there are any questions when that comes up, we'll call you up for that. Anyone else on my left side, your right side of the room, like to speak? All right, anyone on my right side, your left side of the room that would like to speak? Anyone in the back of the room? All right, that one. Closed citizen comments. We'll move on to our policy agenda. There are no ordinances. A has been removed, so we'll move to Resolution B.
Resolution for conditional use approval for an RV park upon three parcels of land situated along or near DeBee's Road.
Do you have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
First by Mr. Tisdale, second by Ms. Newman. Discussion?
It's pretty clear. There's parcels totaling a little over two acres on the Biloxi side of DeBee's Road, halfway between Switzer Drive, the railroad tracks and Highway ninety. Property's been empty for a number of years, certainly since Katrina. It falls a couple of lots behind where the old Olive Garden used to be. That being said, it's a conditional use. I support it. As Mr. Boudreau noted, he's here if any of you have any questions. That concludes my comments. Thank you.
All right, any other discussion?
Yeah, I do. I noticed in the resolution, they didn't state that the Ocean Hospital was against this. How come that was not listed in the resolution? That they had people opposed this being put up in that area.
Opposition at the planning.
Right. There were some real estate agents that came to the planning commission meeting that represented adjacent property to this lot, that were opposed to it. Their argument was is that they felt the property around there should remain medical in use. The planning commission heard arguments from both sides and voted to approve the project. You know, they approved the conditional use, but rejected the variance request for the site. Now, the opposition, all the comments should be in your minutes that are attached to your packet. And it'll tell you each person that got up and spoke and what their argument was against it. But that's.
Well, I was trying to find out the Ocean Hospital where they said they was against it. They keep saying it's going to be a high-end RV park. And yet, it's not concrete, it pads, it's rocks. I don't say anything about this being high-ended RV park. And it's two acres big enough to have a RV park. We just going to have another little trailer park.
Well, I think that was the reason that the planning commission voted to deny the variance. Because when the presentation was made, that it was going to be an upscale RV park. And then there was a request to use limestone for the sites and, well, for the road going through the project. Those two just didn't seem to go together. And they felt that if it was going to be an upscale park, then let's use either hard surface parking or some type of brick or what we call grasscrete. You know, the lattice-shaped concrete block as an amenity in there. And they rejected the variance, so they'll have to use some type of hard surface in there. But they are going to be required to put in a buffer strip around the property. And they don't show a lot of amenities. There are only fourteen sites in here. But a part of the argument for the project was that when you have a medical community now, and y'all probably noticed this, that there is usually an apartment complex or a hotel or an RV park located somewhere adjacent to the medical complex for family members or visitors to be there while someone's going through extensive health care. And that was a part of the argument. So, planning commission voted to approve it, the conditional use. Again, with any conditional use, if they fail to comply with the conditions that were put on it, then the planning commission and the city council have the right to revoke that conditional use permit.
My problem is I don't want to lose the hospitals for RV parks. We need the medical facilities, it must be we need anything. So, it's not a great area to be putting an RV park in two acres of land anyway. So, how many pieces of, what do you call it, trailers or whatever you want to do, park there in just two acres?
Fourteen sites total on this one.
Second?
Fourteen sites on this one, and they are oversized sites. So, they're there to accommodate the larger RVs.
Fifth wheel, the fifth wheel RVs.
Yes, sir.
And what about the amenity? They're going to have spoon food. We're supposed to be upscale. We have spoon food, recreation room, we can have that. We're just going to have a bunch of trailers.
Well, no, sir, those are not required. You know, they can choose.
They're going to be upscale then, so that's not right.
They can choose to put in amenities, but they're not required to by ordinance.
To me, I think if they need to be sent back and redone, and if you're going to do something else, then say you're not going to do upscale. Tell them what you actually want to do, what you do. If you only want to do fourteen of these, do they affect any medical hookups for fourteen trailers? I don't think so. So, I mean, I would suggest that you table this, have them come back to the planning commission or the council, which was exactly what they planned on doing. Now, call it upscale if you know what upscaling it. But that's not upscaling it, when you're just having parking fourteen trailers. And then you hear people voice their opinion against it. You know, the medical people. And that's, that part there bothers me, right there. That I don't want to be losing hospitals, a handicap hospital, anything. The medical health, I think, is one of them. And those are those, you know, you don't want to lose those. So, I think something needs to be done. To me, so I would suggest that we table this and let them bring back something else.
Mr. Boudreau may be able to respond to some of those questions. I don't want to speak for the owner, but he represents the owner, so he could tell you what they could or could not do.
And that's not going to say the medical thing, making statements. Well, I need to find exactly what they're doing there right now. It's time, but we're definitely not upscale. We just put in fourteen pads. They're not even concrete. So, you didn't even want to find buses, anything like that, park it in there on rocks. It ain't going to happen.
Well, I believe the sites, the actual pad sites are hard surface. If I remember right, it was just, it was just the road that navigates through it, where they asked for the variance. The pad sites themselves will be hard surface.
So, I'm going to bring in eight hundred thousand dollar buses in there and ride through rocks and everything to get to my pad. I don't think so. Ain't going to happen.
That was denied.
That's right. That's what the, that's the way the zoning board of adjustments and appeals felt about it too, and that's why they denied the variance and required them to put in a hard surface.
I just think everybody should be made aware of what there's an opportunity that we could lose here in the long run. The fourteen spots, lose the hospital, one of them, you know, it's not a good thing. That's why I think there's more concrete things need to be brought to us as a city council. The way against both things that we have to do. The fourteen trailers, always going to lose a hospital. That's not too equal. So, that's why I think it should be tabled. That's something else you come back to. So, I would make that motion. It's up to y'all if y'all don't want to do that. But I would suggest that we do that with any information coming back. Thank you.
So, we have a motion on?
We have a motion that we table.
We continue discussion before we consider Mr. Lawrence's motion?
Yeah, that's fine. Mr. Tisdale has to say something.
Let's talk about that property, this particular property and the surrounding properties on that block. It's in the center of that property is the old Gulf Coast Community Hospital. I couldn't tell you how long it's been empty, Mr. Creel may know. I bet twenty years.
At least.
Okay. Nothing's been done with that property. I know that, you know, folks, what can you do with an old hospital? I'm sure somebody has an idea somewhere, but nothing's happened in twenty years. You have an apartment complex and a hotel also on that block. The hotel fronts Walmart Lane. And the apartment complex backs up. It's at the end of Gateway Drive, and it backs up against Switzer Drive. Then you have, behind the old hospital, you have the Harold Pace Building. It's a copper-covered. If you remember, there are a number of clinics in there, and some of that space is empty. And then you have the old Gulf Oaks, which is now Ocean's Behavioral Therapy. And they do good work, and it's been there for a number of years and changed hands a couple of times. Then on the corner of Switzer and DeBee's Road, you have a four-story building. There are a number of doctors in there, but there are also lawyers, so it's not exclusively medical or medically related. So, that's kind of the lay of the land right now. I can't think of anything that's happened on that block since Katrina. Can you, Mr. Creel? Not a thing. Is there a medical corridor or some sort of medical overlay in that area?
No, sir.
You've got a developer who wants to do something with his property. And in looking through the transcript and listening and sitting in on the public hearing at the planning commission, he had the property up for sale, if I recollect accurately, for three years and had one offer on the property. The folks that had somebody there speaking against this, voicing their concerns, was somebody who represented Ocean's Behavioral Health, who represented that structure on the corner of Switzer and DeBee's. And then across the street on the Gulfport side of DeBee's Road, they had the Realtors Association, Gulf Coast Realtors Association. And they're concerned about the appearance of the park. But with that buffer, it could be landscaping. It could be a privacy fence, eight feet tall for that matter.
Yes, sir.
So, how long should we wait until these properties, if they're going to develop as some sort of medical corridor? How long are we going to wait? Or how long should those property owners wait before they decide to develop their property? So, this gentleman has presented a proposal for an RV park. There are fourteen pads. He had asked that the drives be limestone rock, I think it was.
That's correct.
That was the variance that was asked for. It was denied by the planning commission or the board of zoning adjustments.
Zoning Board of Adjustments and Appeals.
Right. So, everybody had a, everybody had an opportunity to be heard. You have a copy of the transcript. I'm sure you've reviewed it. The question is, he's a property owner who wants to do something with his property. He's tried to sell it, there's no interest. Obviously, he wants to generate revenue. It's within roughly a quarter of a mile of the sand beach. I would think we'd be happy to see some sort of development there. Are there any other prospects that you're aware of, Mr. Creel? Of people that want to develop some project there?
In that particular area, coming off of Gateway on the Beach Boulevard, we don't have any pending applications for any projects in there.
Right, so, so it's, I'm no Realtor, and I'm not an expert on the realty market, but I would hazard a guess that this is not considered a hot property.
Not right now.
Just because nothing's been done for the. Just because nothing's been done for the past 20 years there. So, having said that, I would, I would assume, as Mr. Creel mentioned, that Mr., Mr. Boudreau, if you had specifics about what kind of, you know, what the park would look like or what the plans are for the park, uh, he, he's the best one to speak to that if you had questions. Thank you.
Mr. Glavine?
Uh, I have a question for Director Creel. Uh, what was the planning commission vote? Was it unanimous, uh, to approve it?
Seven to three.
Seven to three?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, and, and I've heard some of the objections here. Uh, do we have a copy of the plan, the actual plans?
It should be in your packet.
Okay, I haven't pulled it up today. I've been, uh, out of town, you know, for the most part.
We don't have it to put on the, uh, agenda here?
Okay. And, uh, yeah, I would like to hear from Mr. Boudreau and, uh, some of the specifics. Uh, you know, I think that's, it would be good for the council to hear, you know, from, from the engineer or the developer.
Mr. Micavich has owned the property, I believe, 12 years, 13 years. And, um, of course, he tried to sell it and it could not. And he was looking for something to do on the property that, um, um, I guess from the hurricane up in the surge zone, um, I mean, there used to be two restaurants there on the corner that did very well, that was always packed. But I, but after the storm, um, people are scared to invest their money in that area. And, uh, so with the RV park, um, most of the infrastructure is underground. So if there is a storm, it can be placed back into, uh, operation quicker and, um, make, um, tax money for the city. Also, when, when he did this park, he wanted it nice. He wanted large, uh, sites. Actually, the, the sites, the smallest site is twice as big as the, uh, city's minimum in their ordinance. Um, every oak tree on the, um, and there are some large oak trees. Every oak tree was, um, protected, um, avoided, uh, sewer design, everything was, was avoided to go around the, uh, the, uh, trees and save those. And that was the big point he wanted. He didn't want to put asphalt over the, the tree roots mainly is, uh, was his concern. But, um, but we understand it has to be a hard surface, either asphalt or it could be brick pavers or something like that, which would serve the same purpose that he was looking for. Behind the property is the, the old hospital and, uh, his property line is the chain link fence on the, uh, west side of the, the hospital, which is just a, a sea of dilapidated asphalt. He feels that the screening will screen his park from, from that. I mean, it's a, it's not a very nice view out the, uh, east side of his property. Um, the screening, uh, for the city, it's either, um, what's designed is the 15 feet that the, uh, ordinance requires, um, with plantings and all to, to shield it. The oak trees, some will have to be trimmed, um, some wants to trim as little as possible, um, for fire truck and, um, access, according to the ordinance. Any other questions?
I do. Is this a live-in park?
No, sir.
It's a weekend park?
It's a, uh, according to the ordinance, ordinance doesn't allow longer than two or three weeks, I believe.
And then you've come to the planning commission, you said it was upscale. Why did you state that it was upscale?
Because of the large size of the lots, the protecting of the park itself, um, it's just going to be a nice, it's not going to be like most RV parks you see, they're stacked in side by side. You can't even open a, a, uh, a slot out because it'll hit the trailer next to them. It's, it's, uh, these, like I say, the, some of these lots, these lots are, are as large as some of the smaller home lots that's allowed in the city of Biloxi.
Do you have enough parking for like, does somebody haul one of them in with a truck or a boat behind it? Do you have places to put that?
Um, there's, there's enough room on each site to park two vehicles.
Okay, and a lot of them bring, haul, they haul either a car behind them or a truck or, or even a boat. So you have to have a lot of extra parking besides the RV itself. That's what they bring with them. You have to have places to put that. Do you have enough land to park, say like a, throw, bring the boat or the trailer? Do you have a lot that they can do that? Or that the lot's big enough for them to park the RV and the boat trailer?
All the lots are, are, um, well, parking on the lot itself. Each, each site is, uh, 55 to 60 feet long, the, the paved area. And then also there is room, I mean, you got 45 feet a minimum width on each lot. So you can, uh, you know, there's, there's plenty of room on each lot.
What was the variance you asked for that was denied?
Sir?
What was the variance that you asked for that was denied?
It was for, um, Mr. Micavich was asking for limestone road, um, and the ordinance requires a hard surface.
So you went with all-
For the road, just for the road.
But you have, the road going in is not asphalt?
Sir?
The road going in is not, is that the rock?
Now, the road going in now, um, since that was denied, it has to be concrete, asphalt or some hard surface like brick pavers or something like that.
And they park on concrete, the RVs?
Yes, sir.
So anything that would be concrete. I never got that out of that, the message is like that. I never figured it out like that. Cause upscale things are pretty upscale with recreation rooms, swimming pools and anything else.
Um, swimming pool, he's got to have an office with a little, you know, small area in there, but swimming pool nowadays is just mainly insurance, um, concerns.
I know, and that's, that's why we list them as upscale. Thank you.
All right, do you still, are you still trying to have a motion to table?
I would like to do that. I'd like to find out everything I could about it. I'd like to make sure I have everything right. That's, that's the only reason.
Or is, is there anyone with a second?
I make the motion.
Is there a second?
I, I will second it just because I, I want to be comfortable about the medical part and Ocean's is a real, plays a key role in our community. And I'd like to be assured that we're not foregoing, you know, a, you know, something that could be better. Um, I, I'm not a, I'm not, you know, opposed to, to the development per se, but it does put a wild card in my mind about the, you know, potential for an expansion of, of, of some additional medical, uh, facility that might be good for the entire community.
Okay.
If there is, you know, any kind of demand that's developing in the middle state market.
Okay, we have a first and a second to table, all in favor of tabling.
How long?
All right, we have four, George Lawrence and Kenny Glavine, all against. Newman, Tisdale, Guines and myself against. All right, now I'll call for the question, all in favor of the resolution as written, all opposed, four to, the same as before, just opposite. Now move to Resolution C.
Resolution rescinding Resolution Number 52820 regarding low-speed vehicles.
Do you have a motion?
This is, uh, the one we moved before? This is removed. This is a resuming original, so we can come back with a brand new one. So that's all we doing here is rescinding the old one.
Okay. All right, so now we're moving to D. Is that correct? Okay, so this is rescinding, okay. So I, do I have a motion?
I do.
All right, a second?
We rescind it.
I'll second it.
All right, first by Mr. Lawrence, second by Mr. Guines, all in favor of rescinding C. Six zero. All right, now we'll move to Resolution D.
Resolution in support of local and private legislation authorizing the operation of low-speed vehicles in the city of Biloxi.
Do you have a motion?
I have a motion.
I'll second again.
All right, first by Mr. Lawrence, second by Mr. Guines. All right, discussion?
What we're doing here is asking the state to give us permission to look at this. We have to go through the legislative body of the state to get approval to do this. And that's what this is all about. When it comes back that we can actually do it, then you put the rules and regulations on what you have to do to approve it in the city. So that's what we do, that's our first step. So we just need a unanimous vote.
Need a unanimous, to get to the local and private component within them.
So at this point, we don't discuss none of the nuts and bolts of it. This is just to send a jaxon and then if, once they approve it, then we put our ordinance together. All right, do you have any discussion, Mr. Guines? You second it?
Uh, no, I think it's, it's, it's a great opportunity, um, to ignite the downtown area, so, um, in favor of it. And we can set the rules accordingly once it comes back to us.
Okay, uh, Mr. Tisdale, did you have any discussion?
Just a couple of comments, uh, for folks who may be following this. A low-speed vehicle means any four-wheeled electric vehi- vehicle that's capable of a top speed of no greater than 25 miles an hour and is equipped with safety equipment as required under federal, federal regulations. And there's a certain reference number. But basically, a low-speed vehicle may be operate, what we're saying and, and hoping the legislature will approve in the private and local bill we're seeking is that they may be operated on city streets where the speed limit is 25 miles an hour or below. The driver must possess a valid driver's license and proof of financial responsibility and insurance. May not be operated on, over or across interstate highways or state highways. Not permitted to cross Highway 90 or operate south of Highway 90. May cross certain streets that exceed 25 miles an hour limit, but only for purposes of crossing these streets and the crossing must occur in intersection with a traffic signal. Subject to the applicable laws of the state and city related to traffic and parking with corresponding penalties. And the vehicles to be registered annually and inspected at a cost of $75. Registration decal displayed on the left rear fender of the vehicle and the decal is non-transferable. So that's basically what's included in our resolution that's going to the legislature, asking them to approve a private and local bill so that low-speed vehicles can operate on some streets in the city of Biloxi. That's all, I just wanted everybody to be clear on that. Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right, all in favor? Five zero. Mr. Glavine's out of the room. Do we need to wait on him?
Do you vote, uh, want to have him vote just so there's no issues?
Yeah, so can you? Okay, do you mind grabbing him? Yeah, this has to be unanimous for the legislature to-
So again, this, so what, five oh?
Yeah, but he's present but out of the room, so we just, I'm- Okay, do, I'll call for the question again, all in favor? All right, six zero. All right, well now move to the consent agenda.
Come on.
Have a second?
Second.
All right, first by Mr. Lawrence, second by Mr. Tisdale.
Uh, one question. On B, did somebody resign or we hired somebody new as a deputy for the municipal court? Did we lose somebody or we hired somebody else?
That's not to say a deputy clerk, that's, we swear for his office, we need to take testimony, swear to documents, that's what he'd be doing. He's in the field, he's going to swear to another officer's, an affidavit.
Okay, just, just, you're just doing it right, okay.
All right, we'll start with Mr. Tisdale. Do you have any questions?
Actually, I do not, thank you.
All right, Ms. Newman? All right, Mr. Lawrence, other than, did you mention anything?
That was the main one.
All right, Mr. Glavine?
I'm good.
Mr. Guines?
Good.
All right, I don't have anything. So I'll call for the question, all in favor of the consent agenda? Six zero, any exceptions? No exceptions, all right. We'll now move to code enforcements, Mr. Creel. First item on the agenda, item A, Ho Main Dome, 391 Main Street. This property is still in violation. Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of or against Ho Main Dome on 391 Main Street? All right, please come forward.
Mr. Dome is here.
Okay. Please come forward. Mr. Dome, would you please sign in on the sheet there on the table? All right, you can speak, Mr. Dome.
Mr. Dome, you want to tell them about the property?
Yeah.
You need to speak to, speak into the microphone and tell them about the property.
Yeah, I tell all the, the set, so I have a couple things that I, you want to keep.
Can, can you, are you, can you, can you have it done in about 30 days? The cleanup, the cleanup, what the city is asking for you to do?
Yeah.
For 30 days? Okay, so what we'll do is I'll motion to give you 30 more days so you can go ahead and get it done, okay?
Yeah.
Okay, that'll be fine with you? Okay, so move. All right.
More days.
First and second.
Uh, Ms. Newman? All in favor? Six oh, okay, you have an additional 30 days. Okay, thank you. All right, now we'll move to item B, on code enforcements. Item B, NP Lund, care of Joan Lund, 444 Oak Lawn Place. This property is still in violation. Is there anyone here to speak on behalf? Can we make these, are these two right beside each other? They are, but let me clarify, uh, real quick. There are, um, there are two things on the property. The lots were overgrown, that was number one, and then there are some structures on both of these properties, they're side by side. If we had brought the structures and the overgrowth to the council at the same time, it would have taken another month to get them here because it, there's a lot of work involved in bringing a structure to the council than there is in bringing an overgrown lot. So we went ahead and brought the trash growth and debris first. And then Ms. Lund has a, a building official hearing about the structures on February the 10th. And based on what we can get worked out of that, the structures may be coming back to the council about a month from now. So that's kind of where we are on these. And Ms. Lund is here to, uh, to respond. All right?
Good afternoon, my name is Joan Elizabeth Lund. I'm at 161 Connery Circle, Biloxi, Mississippi, 39531. And as I understand it, we've- And as I understand it, we've combined these two hearings on Oak Lawn together. The addresses are 444 and 450 Oak Lawn Place in Biloxi. I suppose I should start by first... Respectfully requesting that Mr. Lawrence either recuse himself and step out or at least refrain from commenting or participating in the hearing as it's my belief that he has a conflict of interest. He's wearing two hats here. One, acting as a councilman, and one, acting as an owner. It's my understanding from searching the land records of Harrison County that he owns a parcel of property two doors down. It's my contention that he should be unbiased. And with his ownership, I think he's lost some objectivity. I took a minute before the meeting to speak with him, and he demonstrated a clear prejudice even before we had this hearing that his mind was made up how he was going to vote and what would be done. So if I could get a decision from Mr. Lawrence, if he'd recuse and step out or refrain from commenting and participating in the hearing due to the conflict.
Are you addressing me?
Yes, she's asking you to recuse yourself from voting on this because she believes that you have a conflict of interest.
I have no conflicts. I represent the whole neighborhood. I have no conflict of interest.
You represent...
I represent everybody on the street.
Huh?
This is everybody on the street complaining about this property. It's probably been like 15 years. 15 years it's probably been out of compliance. Now, I ain't doing me recusing myself about anything. I represent the whole street. And the whole street is complaining about your property. And you don't seem to take care of your property. And you've been before the case several times. So we got it to the council to make sure that we hire a contractor and clean up this property. That's why I see it before the council. You don't keep it clean. You don't file up on it. The houses are falling apart. They need to be secured. The land need to be looked like everybody else in the neighborhood. So that's about me. I am not recusing myself about anything because I represent that whole street. And it's the whole street that's complaining. Not one person. So that ain't gonna wash. What you need to do is we're gonna have the contractor put this off a bid and have him clean it up. And then you need to look at repaying them houses or we're gonna demolish them. That's the next option. You can't just let them fall apart. You got vines and roots and trees growing through them. Everybody's been out there. The inspector's been out there. Everybody looked at, we've talked to you. You go there, cut the grass. That don't get it. The property need to be cleaned up. Everybody right on that street. Everybody's property cleaned up.
All right, Mr. Lawrence, she was just asking you to recuse yourself, so let us let her finish saying what she's gonna say, and then we'll address her.
I'm not recusing myself because I represent the whole street.
All right.
I don't represent one person. An elected official, you gotta represent everybody. So I'm not accusing myself about anything.
All right, Ms. Lund, you can continue.
Thank you, sir. I think that fairly demonstrates his lack of objectivity on these two hearings. All right, as I understand it, and per the notice letter, we're dealing with three code sections. One is a state code section, and then there are a couple of city ordinances. According to the letter from Mr. Creel dated January 8th, it's come to his attention but determined that these two parcels, which were my parents' properties, are in violation of Section 211911 of the Mississippi Code. So that's the first hurdle. And Sections 9.113 and 9.21 of the code. And I've got both of those here, and those require that the property be cleared of all high weeds, grass, underbrush, brush, and debris. I should emphasize that this is just for the weeds, grass, and overgrowth or underbrush that's here today. Mr. Creel alluded to the structures, and that is not for your consideration today. It's not on the agenda. There's more that has to happen before that gets brought to the commission. So if we start with the state statute, which takes precedent over the city code, 211911, Section 1B, sets out the requirements that have to be met and then dictates what your action may be. So first, there has to be a hearing, which is why we're here today. And the city has to adjudicate that the property in its then condition, so as of today, that it's a menace to the public health, safety, and welfare of the community. Now, this past weekend, I had a lawn man go out and he mowed and he cleared. And I spoke with Mr. Creel yesterday afternoon about it. And he has a couple of areas of concern between the sheds and the fence, and the smaller house sits on brick piers, and there's some bamboo and like wild, I don't know what they are, like little offshoots of oak trees and weeds. And he would like those taken down too. I've already contacted the yard man and made arrangements with him to come address Mr. Creel's concerns and take care of that. It won't be this weekend, but it'll be sometime the week after that or that weekend. So your first requirement is that at this hearing, you have to look at the property in its now condition. And its now condition is that the weeds and the grass have been cut to under 12 inches, which is what the code requires. The second prong of the test is if... If the owner does not clean it himself or herself, which I did this past weekend, only then can the city proceed to clear the land. Y'all all with me on that?
Yeah, I... Let's do this. So, Mr. Creel, have you been back out to the property?
Yes, I have.
Okay, so what she's saying is between one of the structures and the fence needs to be cleaned and underneath one of the homes.
Yes, sir.
Okay, we have a meeting on February the 2nd or 1st, and then our next one will be on the 16th. Can you have this done by the 16th?
I would ask for 30 days to have it done, so that would be...
So there has been progress, Mr. Creel, but there are still a few things that need to be done.
They... She did send someone out there over the weekend, and they mowed the grass. They just didn't... They didn't go around the perimeter of the property or around the perimeter of the smaller house. So I told Ms. Lund yesterday on the phone that from my perspective, it's still in violation. And she was coming in today to ask for an extension.
I don't mind giving an extra 30 days. That's up to the council to vote on. I'll make that motion.
Just a second. These people live around here for 15 years. It's been going on. This has just not happened. It's been on for 15 years, and nothing's been done.
No.
That's cited. Your last permit expired July 2010. July of 2010.
Was what?
For 10 years, you have done nothing.
I disagree with your clarification, and I don't know what expired in 2010.
It expired July 2010.
What did?
So the people that live there every day, which you don't seem to care about at all, otherwise you take care of the property.
What expired?
So I'm not getting an extension. I need the city to hire a contractor to clean up the property. You need to do something with them two houses. We're gonna lose them two houses.
I still didn't...
I mean, you know, so you can't sit here and now all of a sudden appear 15 years later. Oh, I'm gonna fix it this week. No. These people up here is upset. These people here, they wanna speak. The people that live on the street want something done immediately. And 15 years later, it's not the time to come do it. Because you're not taking care of your houses, two of them on that street.
Okay, I withdraw my motion for this moment. So basically, what you want is 30 days. That's what you're asking for?
Yes, I think my man can come back out there.
Now, remember, the only thing that we're voting on, that the council's voting on today, is just the growth, trash, and debris.
Nothing to do with the structures, just the... Okay. I understand. I wasn't aware that there's people in the audience that would like to speak as well. So your 30 days is for consideration, but we're gonna allow the people that live in the neighborhood to speak as well.
Also, on that note, pursuant to y'all's own code, 3-2-3, paragraph 6, it's only a person with an interest in the property who shall be allowed the time here to address this council. I'm the only person in this room with an interest in the property.
There's people that... People can speak on behalf and against on a code violation, ma'am.
Either an ownership interest or a beneficiary interest. That's your own code. Also, nobody spoke during the public comments, so I would believe they're foreclosed from that.
Mr. Aban? Mr. Aban?
Yeah, I think she's correct.
So people cannot speak against?
Well, we're talking on... We had a motion for a 30-day extension.
I withdraw that motion. Now, we're still discussing the violation, so as far as that goes. Or, I mean, in the past, we've always asked, can someone speak on behalf or against?
Well, give me a minute just to double-check that ordinance. 311. Ma'am, I got a question. Are you wanting or willing to maintain your property? I mean... Okay, and have you... Are you telling us today that you have done that? Or have you... Are you testifying today that you are maintaining the property properly?
That this notice letter was sent to me. And pursuant to this, I'm to clear all of the high weeds, grass, undergrowth, underbrush, trash, and debris. And that the city is respectfully requesting the subject property be cleared of the violations. And that's when I hired the yard man who went out there. It says if you are unable to remedy the aforementioned, then the city council will hold a hearing.
Okay, so is your claim today, you've done everything? You've cleared it of debris and trash?
No, no. In speaking with Mr. Creel, I see what his concerns are. I went back out there this morning, and I can see what's coming up from the piers as the smaller house sits on brick piers.
And you are testifying today, you're agreeing to rectify that in a reasonable amount of time?
Right.
Which is... What's a reasonable amount of time?
Well, I'm asking for the 30 days, and that's gonna be under advisement.
Okay. All right, I just wanted to answer those questions.
Mr. Creel? Normally, when we have passed something like this before, what is generally the time between when we pass it and you having someone to go out? There's usually a timeframe, and I've known in the past where you, even though we've passed it, the owners would go out there and clean it up before that happened, before you actually take action. What is that roundabout timeframe?
It typically takes three to four weeks. And what happens is, if the... Let's say the council voted on this today, then it would have to come back for adjudication at the next meeting. And once we got that adjudication, then we would have to go and get bids from the contractors that regularly do our cleanup work on these properties. So by the time that happened, it's still gonna take at least three weeks and possibly four.
Two to three weeks, so we...
So what happens if, in that timeframe, she cleaned, it's done?
If she resolves it, then let's say that y'all grant an extension. I'll just notify y'all that it's been done, it's been resolved, and that would be the end of that part of it.
Right, because what I'm looking for is a happy medium right here where I can vote to support George in making sure this action take place. And then we have two to three weeks to get the work done. So I'm looking at a happy medium somewhere in between there. That way, we'll ensure that it gets taken care of.
You need... Let me... This is the neighborhood that needs help. And if you don't put this on the table, the hire contractor, it will not get done. That's the purpose of hiring a contractor. If she wants to clean up after, that's fine.
So let's just say that...
No, let me get this straight. This is the main... I've been... These people in this street are upset for 15 years living with this. And it's always cut the grass a little bit, don't do anything else. That's not gonna happen now. We need to support hiring a contractor to clean this property up. And then it's up to her. She's actually gonna do something she says she's gonna do.
Okay, let me ask Mr. Creel. So let's just say that we do not grant an extension. You're saying it takes three to four weeks to take... During that timeframe, if she takes care of the property, I believe that's what Mr. Gines was asking. During that timeframe, if it's taken care of by the time all the wheels have turned and there's a contractor, what happens then if the cases...
The case is resolved. The case on the property, the land, is resolved.
Well, we're not dealing with other structures at all, correct?
There'd be nothing left for the contractor to go out and clean up. If she removes the rest of the growth that's on the property, like we've talked about, we would still go ahead and kind of go through the process. But if we... Let's just say that we accept bids to go clean it up, but we go out there and there's nothing to clean up, that's the end of it. It's resolved.
And what we're talking about today has nothing at all to do with the two structures except for the bamboo that's growing through or whatever it is on the one?
That's correct, yes. But they need to be secured too.
Okay, well, I'm fine with that. I mean, that gives her three weeks. And if in those three weeks it's not done, the wheels are turning, the contractors clean it up. And if you can clear...
Yeah, let me just clarify. I thought it said any person... I thought it said with an ownership interest, but it just... It does state any person with an interest in the property. And I think that would apply to a neighbor. They would have an interest in this hearing, so...
Okay, so at this time, we'll allow anyone that wants to speak against?
Well, wait a minute. We need to finish looking at the law and what's required first.
Our attorney is the one that dictates the law and what we do and don't do?
No, I have to make a record of it at this hearing.
Okay.
So I'll go through these other statutes. So Mr. Creel requests that the property be cleared, which I did this weekend, although I need to see about this bamboo and the stuff by the fence. Now, if I was unable to remedy that, then you would have this hearing here. And I think you may have a problem with the notice of this hearing when you go to cite the code section, the state code section, Mississippi Code annotated, 211911. Y'all talk about a two-year period of time, a window when the city can go back in. And no, that's not what that section says. 211911-1B requires if at this hearing you make the adjudication in its today condition to be a menace to the health, safety, and welfare. And if I do not fix it myself, then the city can proceed to clear the land.
As... But Mr. Creel has stated that as of today, the property is still in violation.
Okay, yes, and I think what she's referring to, there was a change in the state law this past year. What it states is if the... Basically, if the city council votes on this property at this public hearing for us to hire a contractor to go clean it up, and if within the next two years that property gets in violation again, we do not have to come back for a public hearing. We're allowed to just go out, post signs on the property for two weeks before, hire a contractor, go in and clean it up, and then add those costs back to the taxes for however many times is necessary over the next two years. I think a big part of the... I think a big part of the frustration here with the neighbors is that the property, and I told Ms. Lund this this morning, that this property is not on a routine, it, they're vacant, but it's not on a routine for getting it cut, like once a month or once every couple of months. It essentially grows until it becomes a nuisance, and then the neighbors complain about it. And the letter that I send out to her is the same letter that we send out to everybody when there's a violation, just making them aware there's a violation and that it needs to be corrected. So I suggested to her this morning that if she were to put the property on a regular routine of getting it cut, you know, at least once a month, then probably a lot of this, this anger would go away. So that's kind of where we are.
Yeah. And the point I was making about the two years versus the one year, the statute 211911, subparagraph 1B, third paragraph, no, second paragraph, it's one year, not two years.
Well, I would hope that once, if you do get the property cleaned, you put it on a schedule, and we don't have to worry about that one year or two-year thing anyway.
And what I'm saying that is, what this hearing is supposed to be for, which is why I asked for the time to meet Mr. Creel's needs.
Go ahead, Mr. Creel.
It was one year, but actually, the legislature changed that this past year, so it's now two years to go back in.
It's one year, this is the statute, Mississippi Code 2020 edition. And that's what I'm pointing out, I think you might have a problem with the notice. The two years is for a different section of the statute. The one that applies here is one year. There is a two-year provision, but there are certain characteristics that have to be checked off, and we're not operating under that subsection.
We're talking about going back in for the next two years, when, in fact, if we get it cleaned up, we won't even have to go back in, you know, for the next year or two years. So we're hoping that she'll get it cleaned up within the next three weeks, and it'll save us from having to hire a contractor to go out there.
Ms. Lund, did you sign in?
I did.
Okay.
The next issue, I think, is probably really a non-issue. It's, y'all cited under 913 of Biloxi Code of Ordinances about no trash tires or white goods, like hot water heaters and stuff. I haven't placed any of that on the property. I don't know what he was referring to on that.
Okay. Trash, trash litter, debris tires are all lumped into the same code number, and that's the reason that we spell that out on there, is that if there are, is any trash, if there is any tires on the property, then it all needs to be cleaned up. But that's kind of an umbrella section there.
Okay. So you're not saying that there were tires or refrigerators or anything like that?
No.
Okay, and the key section here is your code 921, which is the real issue, not to permit weeds or grass to grow over 12 inches. And as I say, we mowed it, I spoke with Mr. Creel, we've got some follow-up work to do, and I've already made those arrangements. Now, the yard man did put, like, sticks and twigs and so forth at the curb, at the street, and your code section 9110 provides for just the regular garbage contractor to come by and pick that up on his usual route. So I think that'll just get taken care of the next time garbage runs.
That's correct.
All right, so I'll leave you with that and my request for the 30 days, or you're talking about the 19th? Three weeks, four weeks?
All right, we're going to, we're going to listen, okay, we're, we'll consider, we're going to listen to what the neighbors have to say.
And I'll reserve a couple of minutes to rebut anything that they might have to say.
If you would, please state your name and sign in on the paper on the table.
Thank y'all for hearing me. My name's Dennis Mines, and I'm a neighbor on that road. And I just wanted to come up here and let y'all know that this has been going on for 15 years. And I've tried, we've had trees literally growing over onto our properties. We have critters, rats, snakes, coogs, opossums, everything. And it always comes down to the same thing. They get her in here, and she'll come just like the day before. She comes and cleans it up, and then it's ghost town. There won't be nobody there for a year. And we have a lot of elderly people in our neighborhood, and I try to keep everybody's grass, most all of them's grass cut, you know, to the best of my property, but I won't go on her property for the simple reason of what's going on here. But I'm just asking that something be done and be done now, because enough's enough, it's been long enough. I don't know if, where y'all live and what kind of neighborhood you live in, but it's sickening to come home after you've spent half your day cleaning everybody's property up, and right in the middle of all of it is this big nasty mess. And every time it's brought up or something's done, she'll go out there and she'll cut a few limbs and mow the grass or something, somebody will do it, and it goes back to the same old thing. You won't see a person out there for a year. So something needs to be done, needs to be done soon. And it's been 15 years of it, and it's, enough's enough. I mean, I don't know about y'all, but I like to take pride in my neighborhood, pride in Biloxi. And that there is no way of taking care of any property, and that's just disheartening to me, and it's just not fair to the neighborhood, you know? She lives in a total another neighborhood, you know? She doesn't have to look at it every day, you know? But we do. And it's, it's time to get it done and get it done now. I mean, this old stuff of saying, oh, okay, we're going to, sure, it might get cleaned up for a day or two and look decent, but then it goes right back to the same state. It's done that, it's been that away for 15 years, and I don't think nothing's going to change unless y'all finally enforce what you're saying and what's supposed to be done. And that's really all I have to say about it, but I hope and pray that y'all do get something done for us. And, you know, we have a lot of good neighbors, and, you know, we all take pride in our stuff. And right now, it's just like, you know, it's, it's just not fair. It's just not fair to us. And I appreciate y'all's time, and y'all do what you can for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Please come forward, and if you will, state your name and sign in on the piece of paper on the table.
My name's John Neal. I live at 440 Oaklawn Place. I am a firefighter for 30 years. I bought this property approximately two years ago, simply because it's homey, nice little house, and I love coming to Biloxi and have for probably 20 years off and on. But I decided that I wanted to live here, and sooner or later, I'm retired completely, but I'm going to live down here, and that's my goal. I love Biloxi, and I love the people around it. They're very similar to what you have in northern Arkansas about myself. And believe me, just don't look at me as an out-of-stater, because I've seen those come in from Illinois and try to tell you your business, because I wouldn't do that. My problem is, when I moved in, the yard was so bad, the fence next door was laying completely in my backyard, the grass next to it. We had more insects and such like that. I'm not as well-versed in the law as Ms. Lund is, but I do believe that, I'm very familiar from being a fire chief for about 10 years. Fire Chief Bonney, how are you? And, by the way, I understand there's a condemnation process, and we're talking, I'm not real sure on the policy, but at a point when a house is uninhabitable, and that's the trouble with me, cleaning the yard is one thing, but a house that becomes uninhabitable in a residential neighborhood, becomes under, at some form, I'm assuming it becomes under condemnation. And if it can't be repaired, or nobody's maintaining a repair, I would assume that at some point, it needs to be condemned, especially with plants, because there's tremendous health disadvantages to that with pests and vermin, as well as a public safety risk. You do have homeless people, like everywhere, and the bottom line is, it can be that, be teenagers, it can be anybody, really. They may take residence in there, and the next thing you know, you have a fire, and that's the last thing, and I'm sure Chief has dealt with this before. But the bottom line is, at some point, if the house isn't inhabitable, that it becomes a health and public safety issue. And I think that should be part of the process personally, in this, in this whole scheme of things, because you only can go on so long. I haven't been involved in it in 15 years, but at the same time, been going on 15 years, it seems like a waste of resources by not getting rid of the properties or whatever, or redoing them, you know, to make a neighborhood where you could rent them out or whatever you need to do. But like I say, I think there's more to it than just cleaning the yard. I think the houses are a problem, and they're not, nobody could live there, they're uninhabitable and need to be taken care of. So I appreciate your time, and I just wanted to say that, but I really enjoy what I'm seeing here. It reminds me back home, same difference. We're just southern folks like you guys. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? All right, while you're coming forward, I'm going to ask Jerry a question. Now, he's bringing this up about the homes. This is going before a judge, is that correct? The houses, the structures?
No, the first step would be is that she would come in for what we call a building official hearing, and that's where the property owner meets with me to talk about what can be done, what needs to be done, to get the houses back to a state where they can be lived in. Now, these, these houses are not to the point where they can be demolished. I mean, they're not structurally unsound. We do a feasibility study. We have the building inspector go out there and do that feasibility, and it has to reach a certain number level before it qualifies for demolition, and these don't come close to it. They can be repaired, and there are some things that need to be corrected, more so on the smaller wooden house than on the other. But we, once they reach a point where they've caused a, or posed a problem to the public, that's when we would go after them. Now, on the, on the wooden house, there's some window sills that need to be replaced, there's some banding around the back that needs to be replaced. They're not open, so, you know, there was no evidence that homeless people were going in and out. The shed in the rear of the smaller wooden house was open, but there was still no evidence of anything that could be closed and secured.
And then one other question before he speaks. So this has been an ongoing issue that, as far as keeping the properties maintained?
Yeah, for a number of years, yes.
All right, if you would, please sign in, state your name.
Greg Nordstrom. I'm a resident right on Oaklawn. I'm going to, first of all, just agree with the condition that Mr. Mines and Mr. Neal brought up. I'll make an additional comment to the fact that I cannot, I live right across the street from the wooden house. I cannot recall a time that that yard was cut other than being notified by the city that was in violation. I can't remember one time in at least five or six years. So she does not maintain it unless absolutely forced to do it. It's been brought up, that mentioned before, also, that this is going on 15 years. In this latest discussion of the condition, and I don't think this yard was cut until Sunday at all in 2020. There's not been a sign up there, the city is aware of it. I don't know what the actual requirement is of having code look at it, if it needs to have a complaint made, but the city certainly knows that this property has not been maintained for 15 years. In my opinion, as a registered voter and a citizen of Biloxi, I almost have to commend Ms. Lund of taking this long and having the council continuously give her another 30 days. How ineffective is our city council in doing that? That for 15 years, the city and the council has not figured out a way to get this property not better, but just the same as any other property on that street. I called in a complaint three months ago, and I was told there was already a complaint on file. That was an outright, I guess politically, you can't use a lie term anymore. I understand that person is no longer with the city. So I think the onus is now on the council and the city. We saw Ms. Lund's presentation never denying that it was in violation. All technicalities, how to delay the process of getting these properties up to code. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? All right, Ms. Lund, you have three minutes for rebuttal, if you would like to speak again.
I'm not exactly sure where this repetition of 15 years comes in, other than Katrina was 15 years ago. My father died quite a while ago, but my mother was still living in the house more than 15, or 15 years ago. So that number, I think they're just throwing around, because maybe it sounds good on their I think that Mr. Creel made it clear to you that we're not talking about uninhabitable structures or condemnable structures. From what I understand, my conversation with Mr. Creel, that's going to come up later in our meeting, is that they are structurally sound. And what I've learned from him is that there's a board on the front porch, inside the front porch, that needs to be replaced. And there are two screen doors on the brick house that he said were torn. I went to look at them today, and that's not the case. They're like accordion screens. So it looks like it's torn, but it's not. It was just off the rail, and I put it back this afternoon. It is not true that I have been before this council time and time again. This is my first time here on this sort of complaint. So that is not a true statement. Also, Mr. Nordstrom mentioned a three-month-old complaint, which would be November. After Hurricane Zeta hit, I brought the yard man out there to clean everything. However, we were unable to, because the surrounding neighbors, instead of putting their own hurricane debris on their property, dumped it on this property. We couldn't even get the truck or the lawn mowers in to do the mowing. And if we did, there would be no place to put the bags or the debris because of the neighbor's debris. The shed door, he said, was open. I closed it this morning. Wanting to repair rot on the window sills, you know, that can be done, that's fine. But the house is secure, it's locked, it is habitable, and I think it was Mr. Neal that mentioned that it was uninhabitable, unless he broke in. He's never been inside. I'm sorry, Ms. Lund, your time is up. Thank you. So the three, three-week extension to the 16th, I think, is what's on the table.
I withdrew my, my motion for an extension, unless someone else is willing to... Unless someone else is willing to, at this point, make a motion for an extension, Mr. Creel's made it clear that if we do rule against you in this and close the case, that it'll be about three weeks before it's cleaned up. If it's not cleaned up by then, then the city's contractor will go in. And personally, with this being an ongoing issue, I think the city having two years to maintain the property, unless, you know, maybe this will give you incentive to maintain the property over the next two years to where we can't just go do it and bill you for it. So I'm, I'm not gonna extend that motion. I withdraw that. I don't know if there's anyone else that, that wants to give a motion, but...
What I wanna, what I wanna put in place to protect the neighbors is to make sure that you, Jerry Creel, start looking for somebody to clean this property up, get a construction person to start cleaning up the property. As long as anything gonna get done, and that's your job to get that done. All these laws and I'll see, 15 years, no more, you could, no more moving that house with the man tomorrow. And that fungus, black mo, nobody's been in those houses for 14 years. You could not move in them houses. You know that about anybody, Jerry. No one's fallen down. Have to pour it, you have to repair, you just put a ton of money in it just to move into it and to clean them up. You cannot move into that house tomorrow. That's not the problem right now. The problem is, we need to stop over at the city council and support our own laws and rules to make sure somebody takes care of property. She not done it. She came just like they said, cut the grass Sunday. I don't get it. We need to make sure that you put it in place. It's a hire contract that you start tomorrow, and we pass this and get it done to protect the neighbors in there. That's our job, is to protect the neighbors, period.
Today, we're not dealing, we're not dealing with the houses. We're dealing with cleaning up the property.
I was gonna say, Mr. President, can you just?
Yeah, we'll just, if there's not a motion, I'll call for the question. All in, go ahead. Yeah, declared, and so that's it. Case closed. Move on to the next case.
The next item on the agenda, item D, is 174 Crawford Street, Joseph Coolges Parker et al.
All right. Is there anyone to speak? On behalf, please come forward, if you will, state your name and sign in the table.
Good afternoon. I, excuse me, I am Scott Parker, the son of Joseph Parker, which is deceased. So Joseph was given the executorship of the property probably a year before his death and was in the process of having the house removed. And I've been in charge of cutting the grass for the past several years since my grandparents have passed away. Since my father passed away, I've actually been in process of being named executor of the, of the will, the original will, because of I'm the only probably last living relative that has any interest in the property as far as having done work there, maintaining it, and to protect my father's interest in the taxes that's been paid on the property up to date. So I have no problem with removing the house. I just wanted to do it where I have the legal standing to do that because it's air property.
Mr. Creel?
Okay. The house is in really bad shape. You probably saw the pictures of the roof where it's caving in, and it, it does need to be removed. Now, the only thing that we would do, if the council votes to approve this today, is to go out and hire a contractor to take the house down. We don't take the property. What we do is we assess, the council's passing, the charges associated with the demolition are added back to the taxes as a special assessment, and then it would be up to Mr. Parker, you know, to make sure that the taxes keep getting paid and, and that kind of thing in order to maintain the property until he can get it changed into his name. But all we would do is remove the structure and clean up the property.
So, and I, I would like to do that, but I want to do that as executor over the estate. Currently, I have no legal standing in order to protect my investment if I go pay and have it done outright. But what I would like to do is to be able to do that on my own, whether that, instead of the city charging an outrageous amount to come out and do it, and, you know, to be two and a half times what it, what I could get it done for.
Okay. Let me make sure one thing. Mr. Parker, are you wanting to demolish the home or move it? Because at one point, you said move the home.
Right. I've already been denied fixing the home up, so I understand it has to be demolished. There's no save in the home. There's no value in the home. There's really no value in the property, other than it's my family's property and family, family's home.
Here, here's the, the challenge that, that I face. Without him having legal standing on the property, I could not issue him a demolition permit. We have to issue a permit to someone who establishes site control of the property. So even if he came into the office and asked for a permit, I would not be able to issue him one.
So are you saying we have to take the house down?
Well, unless he can get power of attorney over the property or something that shows that he has the right to make that kind of decision, I'm limited. I, I can't issue him a permit to demolish the structure.
How long are you looking on the power of attorney or executive?
I hope to have it done within 30 days.
Who's, whose ward is this?
Say again?
Whose ward is this? George, is this your ward?
Where's this Crawford Street? This is Ward one.
Ward one.
Yeah.
You said that you're supposed to have it within 30 days?
Well, that's the timeframe I'm looking at. I haven't been given an exact date of when it was, would, could be legally accomplished, but that's, that's what I'm faced with right now. But if you can't give a permit to someone that has a legal standing in the property, you can give a permit to a contractor to just come tear it down and charge it to the taxpayer?
If the public hang's held and the council passes a resolution, yes, the law allows us to do that.
So the house is an eyesore, but it's not gonna fall over and hurt anybody. It's been boarded up, there's, the windows are boarded. Somebody would have to have an eight-foot ladder in order to climb in one of those windows to get in, to gain entry to the house or go through the roof. And all of this started because a lady said she saw flashlights inside the windows at nighttime, which is impossible because the windows are boarded up. Like I said, I want the house torn down because I'm tired of dealing with it, and it'll make it easier for me to cut the grass in. But I just want to be given the time to, to do it legally to protect my investment of spending the money.
I don't know how you're gonna do it any cheaper than what they get done by a contractor, or they get it done pretty quick.
Let me mention something, too. If the council votes to go ahead and give us the authority to take it down, it takes a lot longer to get the approval because we have to go through Keith Stewart. He has to accept the bids for a demolition project. We can accept them for cleaning up property and that kind of thing, but we have to go through him. So that advertisement takes at least 30 days. So that would give Mr. Parker at least a month and a half to two months to go resolve whatever ownership issue he had.
But we take, they take the lowest bid, is that what it is?
Lowest and best.
So do you have somebody that's wanting to, that was, tear the home down?
I have, I have three contractors coming out to give me bids as well since I received this letter.
Well, just get those, if, if we, just get those guys to bid.
Let me ask a question. Mr. Creel, if we, we, we vote to go ahead and move forward with this, and if you don't have a contractor selected within the 30 days, and he's able to get power of attorney and pull the permit for demolition, would you work with him in that area?
Absolutely. That would, that would be the best-case scenario. If he can get site control and come in and pull the permit and take it down within 30 days, then that's the end of the issue. It's resolved.
So that, for all practical purposes, we're looking at 30, 35, 40 days anyway?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
To me, something I tell you, you ought to be surprised how cheap it is, the contractors that don't go in there and overcharge you to take them down. It might actually benefit Mr. Parker to have something else to do and have it all cleared and going. But like you said, he can look at the bid himself when he gets it in from anybody. He gonna look at it. So, yes, get the process moving, put the bids out, just let him look at the house, and then when that comes, then you can send out Mr. Parker, and he might agree, okay, yeah, that's not that bad, let, let him do it, and it's done. But he don't have to do it week after week after week. So that's the process need to be taken. So that's what we need to put in place.
All right. So what we'll do then is we'll just go forward, close this case, and in the process, if you get power of attorney, you just need to stay in contact with Mr. Creel. If you find someone that can do it cheap, you know, and you don't have power of attorney, get someone, get that person to bid on the job for the, for, you know, if they can, you know, do it cheaper than what anyone that, that we might be able to. All right, this case is closed. All right. We'll now move on to the routine agenda. Do I have a motion?
Move.
Second.
First by Mr. Lawrence, second by Mr. Guines. All in favor.
George didn't get to ask his question.
No, no, I'm just, no, no, I'm sorry. Go ahead, ask your question.
He's coming.
He must have money, he's coming too.
So, last week, when I was here, I mentioned we received our 1.465 million on Friday, January 15th. Since then, I've spoken to Mima, and we have an additional 2.97 million in the pipeline, and we should have that probably within the next 10 to 20 business days. So all is well on the funding side.
Thank you. Call for the question.
All right. Now call for the question. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll second.
All in favor. All right, 6A. Everyone have a great weekend, week.